Let's go ahead and call the special city council meeting for April 25, 2011 to order. First thing on the agenda, of course, is roll call and determination of quorum. Charlene, if you would.
Peterson. Weyfenbach. Davis. Haddock. Kroger. Costello. Quaker. Wa. Brown. Mason. We have quorum.
Very good. Since this is a special council meeting and the topic is discussion as far as budget items, as always, I will turn it over to Council President Ron Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item on the budget discussions this evening is open positions in city government presentation. Go to Jeff, is that going to be you?
I tried to do, in order to fulfill the request that was made at the previous budget meeting, I attached the open position report that you see there with your electronic agenda. And I just wanted to make a couple of points about that of clarification. First of all, with over 700 employees, we have a very fluid situation. So what you've got there is a snapshot of where we were at one week ago, on the 18th of April, when I sent that report to Charlene to be attached to the agenda. Again, like I say, with over 700 employees, we've already had one additional resignation and one additional termination since that report was printed. So like I said, it is somewhat of a fluid situation. The report that you're looking at there says that we have 18 positions open. Of those 18, seven of those positions are in the growth management department. I believe there's a special effort going on in growth management to get some of those positions filled. In fact, five of those positions have already moved beyond the application process, where the application process is already closed, and they're moving along with selecting from the pool of candidates. So one of those positions included in those five is the growth management director position. Interviews are being conducted this week for the growth management director position by an interview committee. Council President Kroger and Alderman Brown are members of that committee. So that is a brief update of where we are in terms of open positions within the city. Thank you, and I'll take any questions that I can possibly clarify.
Any questions for Mr. Barber? Nope, no questions, okay. Thank you, Jeff. Next item on the agenda is where we left off at our last budget meeting, and I believe the last item that we discussed was the use of enterprise funds by other city departments. Our next item on the agenda would be a discussion of a possible $767,000 budget deficit. Alderman Quaker, did you have any comments, Sam? Any discussion on this item? Go ahead, Alderman Quaker.
Thank you. I think other council members have asked us as well, do we have the final results on 2010?
Mr. Chair, thank you. We are still currently working on those numbers. We just received a report, I thought it was last week, but it actually was the week before that we received, on our other post-employment benefits. So we're still trying to finalize those numbers, and we're also working on our airport grants to make sure that we have everything accounted for on that. So I'm hoping to have those numbers completed within the next couple of weeks. The legal and finance committee did continue that until the June 1 meeting, but I hope to have it done prior to that.
Any other comments regarding this item? If not, that will be coming, then, Pauline, to legal and finance committee, that is correct, when it's ready, okay? Any other questions on this item? Being none, we'll go to our next item, which is to look at total loans to possibly consolidate and refinance with a loan consolidation. Pauline, or Mayor Hanks?
Thank you. We actually had this discussion, if you remember, actually at the budget hearings for fiscal year 2011. And since that time, we have actually taken a look at numerous outstanding loans. If you actually remember, it was about two weeks ago when we actually redid a loan and saved, was it $763,000? $716,000 by actually refinancing it. But I'll let Pauline answer that, but no, that is an ongoing effort. We always take a look if we have the possibility of refinancing, getting a lower interest rate, we certainly do so. With that, Pauline.
Thank you, Mayor. There is a spreadsheet at your spots here, and it was also attached to the agenda for the city loans as of December 31 of 2010. I also put on the left-hand side which fund actually pays for that debt service, and then on the right-hand side, it's going to tell you when they mature, when they're callable, if it's a bond, and if we recently refinanced, and if so, how much money we have saved on that.
Okay. Give everybody a few minutes just to glance at this, and if there are any questions, we'll take them. Jordan Mason.
Thank you. Just a quick question for Ms. Sumption. It says $125,415,000 for the total debt and liabilities. I remember not too long ago, not even what seems a month ago, we had a meeting and an update on the long-term debt, so I'm just wondering if this is the long-term debt or another form of debt, because I remember the previous number seemed somewhere around $163.
Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That is correct. This is just the city loans. I failed to change the description at the bottom. That is the total city loans that are outstanding. Of the $163 million, there is also TID debt on there, which is the developers' debt, and not that of the city. There is also landfill post-closure costs. There are calculation for other post-employment benefits on that, as well as any unpaid leave that if you're with the city for so long and you leave the employment, then you also get some sick leave, depending on your length of service and also your vacation time. So that was also included in liabilities before.
Jordan, Mayor, or Mayor, go ahead.
The other thing I'd like to point out is the fact that our total debt long-term is $125 million. That is up. If you actually look at three different line items, there were three major infrastructure improvements that we're doing this year. That's why the debt is where it's at. You have $45 million, which is the water revenue bonds, of course, that's building a new water treatment plant. And then you can also look at two airport bonds, and between those two, it's about $63 million. And so although our debt is up, the reason it's up is because this year, we're investing more than ever, as far as into our infrastructure. Matter of fact, I think Robert Ellis stated that this is going to be the biggest year that we've ever invested in our infrastructure. I think it was $83 million for just the public work projects, and that did not include the airport. So we're well into over $100 million worth of infrastructure improvements this year. So there again, it's up. The reason it's up is because we finally reached a point where we're ready to move forward with investing in infrastructure.
Jordan, did you have any other questions?
Yeah, I do. And unfortunately, this is probably just myself here, but to get a little clarification from the CAFRA report that came out a while ago, that was an increase of $50 million. And it just seems confusing to me, and I guess I'm looking for a little clarification, that now we're up $63 million, so that was only, or I didn't catch that right. If Mayor Hanks could maybe repeat that again.
Mayor.
If I can. There again, my statement was just basically pointing out a couple of line items of a couple of larger projects that are moving forward in fiscal year 2011. That's the $45 million, the water revenue bonds, and also the airport bonds, so.
Appreciate the clarification. Overall, I just, I look forward to continuing to look at our city loans. I think the debt is something that, for myself, I am concerned about, especially the management of it as we proceed forward, especially in light of last week's little market fluctuation, if anyone happened to catch that. Thank you.
Further discussion on this item? Anyone? Mr. Weyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pauline, can you tell us what the total TID debt is? If you don't have it handy, that's fine.
Question was, Ron, total TIF debt?
Yeah, TID debt. I guess the other question I had is, one time, we were visiting with the opportunity to see if the city could bond some of these out that are paying out, you know, reduce these rates from 78%, 9% to 3%, whatever the current bond rate is.
Pauline, do you have the answer to the first question from Mr. Weyfenbach?
As of the end of December of 2010, our total TID debt, which is not the city's debt, it is the developers' debt, is $33,272,000. And that's just a little bit rounding there. As far as bonding it out, we have had discussions with bond council in the past about looking at these and bonding it out. And unfortunately, we have to kind of pre-plan on those, because we have to be able, because these expenses were more than 60 days prior, if we wanted to bid out or go out to bond today, we would have to, we can only look back 60 days to encompass those costs. So if the expense was four years ago, we would not be able to include those costs in the current bonding. So we have to pre-plan a little bit for that. The only exception is, is if the council adopts a reimbursement resolution, which that also has to be done as part of some foresight, because you have to know that you're going to be proceeding with this in a bond mechanism, so that way you can go back farther than the 60 days. But at this point, I don't believe that these could be bonded out under the city's bond. And then there's ones to consider that are coming up that have not. Obviously, 71 is one that you could look at, if that's something that the council wanted to do. 70, I believe, you could also look at that TID at this point. And that's an if you want, being, well, there's no project plan on that one, so we should still be able to do that one. If that's something that the council wishes to do, we can have bond council look at that. But it's one of those that we kind of have to have the foresight to know that we're going to want to do that.
So I guess the current answer is that we can't. That's the official answer, is that we can't bond these out. These are the ones that are already scheduled to be paid off.
The way I understood it, and it's been a couple of years since we've had that discussion, that we have to have had that reimbursement resolution in place to be able to do so. And because you look at the interest rates, and granted, we'd probably get a lower interest rate than what's on the loans now, it's not necessarily going to be the best interest rate that the city's ever received, but it would probably be better than what the developers are getting. And again, we always caution the use of bonding out for these things, just because then the liability falls back on the city. If for some reason that the bond or the TID does not pay off, then it's back on the taxpayers' backs.
I understand that, but that isn't the question I asked. I specifically said that the ones that are scheduled to pay out, I mean, if the tax increment's already there to pay it out, then it would, so I just want to make sure that's clear. I understand the ones that aren't completely to that point, or have a lot more risk to them. So I think you answered my question. Thank you.
Yes.
Alderman Quaker.
Thank you. I'd like to offer a motion to continue this item and update the spreadsheet to include the landfill post-closure information, the post-employment benefits, the paid leave, and then just a sheet on the TIDS and the TID debt, the tax increment district debt. By district would be great. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion, second. Pauline, did you get all those items?
It was just the items that Pauline cited earlier. I think that includes TID debt, landfill post-closure, post-employment benefits, and paid leave. Did I miss anything, Pauline?
Pauline.
If I understand you correctly, you just want all the debt that would be considered under debt and long-term liabilities that's under our annual report. And that would include the TID debt, the post-employment benefits, the compensated balances, and also the landfill post-closure. I can do that.
Sam, when did you want that?
Just at the next meeting's fine.
Oh, at the next budget hearing meeting, okay. Alderman, Haddock.
Can't tell, okay. Did we ever get, we know the debt is $33 million from the developers, do we ever get what that debt started at, and what, or basically assessment of the property, what the property assessment was when these TIDS started, and what's the property assessment of any of them that paid off, and what's the difference?
Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We do an annual report in July that has all of that information on there. I had started putting together the one for this year, and it shows what that is. I do believe I shared previously with maybe legal and finance what that number was on the ones that were paying off, on the, correct me if I'm wrong on that one. But that's something, too, that I can easily provide.
Well, I guess the issue here is, we've talked about TIFs and what they caused the debt to be $33 million, but we did not talk about, the bottom line for me is, if the debt is $33 million, once those debt is done, paid off, then what is that property worth otherwise? Because I know a lot of times, people are saying TIFs aren't good, or TIFs aren't this, or TIFs aren't that, and they are, in the long run, are costing us more money than what we're getting. And I guess, I want to see if we're getting the bang for the buck, basically. Are we getting, if it's $33 million in debt, are we getting $50 million added up to $83 million when we're done, or what that debt is? I mean, what that difference is on that property once you've paid it off? It's kind of like buying a house, fixing it up, and seeing after you fix that house up what it's really worth. Instead of saying $33 million in debt, I'd like to know the bottom line, because a lot of people are arguing back and forth on that, if they're good or if they're bad, so I'd like to know both sides of the story. Thank you.
Mayor Hanks.
Thank you. There again, just a reminder, and Pauline stated this very clearly, although we're required by legislative audit to actually show it on our balance sheets as far as the debt, please keep in mind, the city is not obligated to pay that debt. That is 100% the responsibility of the developers. So think of it almost as a pass-through. Although it shows up on our balance sheets as a debt for the city, the bottom line is the developers are ultimately responsible, and the city is not responsible. If you actually look at all of our developers' agreements that we always write, if there's a shortfall, it's on the developer, never on the city. I just want to make sure, I don't want people to have the misperception that the city is out there, that we borrowed $33 million to finance TIFs. We don't do that. The developer borrows the money, the developer's on the hook, and if there is a shortfall as far as revenue coming in, and typically TIFs are 20 years, if there's a shortfall, it's the developer that's on the hook. We do not sign on those loans. That's a developer, that's a developer risk.
Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I pulled up the 2010 report that I'm getting ready for, to report to you in July. The assessed base valuation on the active TIDS at the end of that year, obviously 71 is not included because that was not approved at that time, the base valuation was $311,531,427,000. The current year assessed tax valuation per the state was $1,366,675,000, so almost triple.
The state was $1 billion? We do have a motion on the floor, I'm sure everybody knows what that motion is. Any further discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is how we manage our finances. Discussion on that item. Jordan.
You know, I think we're moving in the right direction lately over the past couple of months, especially with getting some of these enterprise monthly reports on the enterprise funds. That's been extremely helpful to actually start tracking kind of where the money's going, and I guess I would look forward to making some other advances like that. It's been really helpful for me personally to be able to actually track and set trend lines, to see, you know, what activities are going on, and kind of be able to project a bit. Still working on it, but that information has been useful.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? If not, we'll move to the next one, which is debt management. Jordan.
Just reiterate again, but I guess I'm concerned that with our current debt, we're looking at almost a one-to-one ratio for debt to tax income revenue at this point. From the last report, if it's $163 million, as I recollect, even with this, that puts us at $125 million, that puts us well over half, you know, over 50%. So I guess I'm just concerned that, you know, we need to keep a watchful eye, and I do realize that, you know, the state's debt limit is at $1 billion, but, you know, to be very blunt about that, the comparison, I guess, that I draw in my mind with trying to justify it by going with the state's debt limit is kind of like saying, well, you know, the national GDP's at $13 trillion, but it would be fine, because our national cap would be somewhere around $87 trillion, which would be a proportional derivation. So I guess I feel like we just need to keep a watchful eye on it.
Further discussion, Deb Haddock.
I guess when we're talking about watchful eye, do we have suggestions on what we would change, or what we need to do? Instead of taking a look at it, it would be good to, if you have any suggestions on process or procedure that can be changed on that, because I know we're all wanting to keep a watchful eye on that, but we would like to know, a lot of times, from council members, what suggestions and things that could be brought forward. Go ahead.
Would you like to respond, Jordan?
Thanks, Jordan.
Actually, thank you, Deb, for the question. I appreciate that. One of the things that I've still been investigating, and unfortunately had to put on the backburner, but still working on pretty steadily, is actually getting an audit committee together to, well, first and foremost, and hopefully to the pleasure of Ms. Sumption, maybe to el- alleviate some of our research and hard labor into constantly looking into different ways of saving money. But the other portion is actually to set up a systematic approach to really approaching these things. You know, I think that these budget hearings have been extremely helpful in getting us all kind of up to speed and aware of what's going on. But one of the things that, and this is my personal point of view, as we grow as a city, I think we need to start looking at setting up systems and, you know, methodical ways of actually approaching these things so that we're not really dealing with the minutia directly, we're dealing with the system that is giving us the information we need, you know, in a somewhat timely response. And one of the things that I think we can look at is actually setting up an audit committee, and then from there, maybe moving to looking at a way to have a quarterly or semi-annual audit over time, very similar to the way any business or large-scale business would actually run.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I too believe that the audit system will work great for Rapid City, and how that system is put together on a committee is a good thing. I know just from doing financing in my own business, taking care of those numbers and looking at those numbers each month and making sure, in my job, I have an accountant do these things, but it makes a big difference to look at them, whether you be a city council member or a mayor, and I think it'd be good for the mayor and our city as well. So, I think we've done a great job, but that was a good suggestion, and I appreciate you looking at the process, Jordan.
Any further comments on this item? Being none, this actually takes us through our initial list, and we do have some items that were continued from our last meeting, and we'll go through those to see if we have any answers to these at this point in time. And the first one was to establish an ongoing fund for the upgrade maintenance of all city facilities. Request staff to identify the city's capital outlay accumulation limits as defined by state statute, and to identify the amount of funding currently held in contingency and cash reserve accounts and their corresponding relationship to the state statute restrictions. Do we have anything to report at this present time on this item? Pauline.
There should be a packet of information at your locations and also attached to the agenda. The first page is the capital accumulations, which we are allowed by state statute. For the governmental funds, there's two different ways to set aside money. One is through capital outlay accumulations, and our maximum amount on that is roughly 17 million. The other is through the capital replacement reserve, and that would be roughly 114 million. It just depends on what our fixed assets are. The enterprise funds, all they can do is set up a depreciation reserve fund, and that is limited to what their accumulated depreciation in that fund is, and so those amounts are listed. I did visit with Department of Legislative Audit, because I tried to start sitting down and figuring out, okay, how much do we have actually in capital outlay accumulations? And the information we received from him, he indicated that we actually have to pass a formal resolution saying that, for instance, we are going to buy a $250,000 road grader, so we are going to start today, put $50,000 a year into this special fund for this road grader. We have not done anything that specific. So, at this point, we have no money specifically in a capital outlay accumulation fund. What we do have are five-year capital outlay, or CIP plans, and so that is what the city uses for their planning mechanism. We also do not have a capital replacement reserve, nor do we have depreciation reserve funds specifically set up. If you look at the next page, Ms. Hadcock, I believe, asked for contingency funds, and I looked at what was budgeted in 2011, and those were outlined. The first column is all the general fund, and then CIP fund and community development fund. This, in the general fund, the reentry program and the subsidies are, we always budget in the contingency line item strictly because at the time that the budget is approved, we did not know how those monies would be allocated. And so, we will go back through a supplemental in 2011 to allocate those monies to the, like in the instance of the subsidies, who actually was receiving those monies, and in the reentry program based on what their needs are for that money as well. And then community development is along the same lines, because at the time that the budget is approved, we do not know who is going to get the grant funding, nor do we know for sure the total grant funding that we are allowed. So, those monies are pretty much accounted for in other ways, so they're not truly usable. The third page are the designated reserve funds. I did ask the department directors that have enterprise funds if they have any specific reserve funds set aside. The only one that I am aware of that the council has officially adopted is on the general fund. The reserve fund is set at 15% of estimated revenues, which would be just shy of 6.2 million dollars. The airport, they have their own capital improvement fund, independent of the enterprise fund, but they still try to maintain a $500,000 reserve in the airport enterprise fund. And then you can read the rest. The civic center, the board has set their goal. And as far as public works, water, and sewer, that was part of the rate study that was hired out is to look at what their goal was. So, and then also attached are the state statutes that are referred to on the first page. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
I will go to comments. Alda Womack.
When you talk about supplement and grants, we were talking about this in the general fund before, where we have 45 million, then we add supplement and grants, which we already put it in the 45 million, but because government says we have to put supplement and grants in next set of budget, which actually, doesn't that overestimate us by 2 million? Or at this last budget cycle, about 2 million? Because we already had it budgeted in 2010, but we put an extra money because of supplements and grants of about 2 million in the next set of budget. Am I correct?
Pauline.
Because of federal standards?
What she's talking about, the subsidies.
Correct. The original budget, there were about $2 million additional budget supplemented into the general fund in 2010. That is not necessarily all grants. It could be for contracts that were underway that we did not fully expend in 2010, or 2009 that we rolled over into 2010 to fully, to fund completely. If those contracts are not finished at the end of 2010, then we would have to do a supplement into 2011 as well to finish those contracts, and I believe that was about $400,000 in 2011. But as far as the grants, like the subsidies and the community development, that ends up being a zero-dollar supplement, because we just take it out of the contingency line item and allocate it to where it needs to go.
I guess that's my point. Number one, a reentry program is a grant, so it's money that maybe comes out of our budget, but we get it back. Subsidies for the 200,000, I understand, mayor and council, and then, what was I going to say? Bottom line is 1,258,000. I guess, again, if you start the budget, I thought it was explained to me, at the 45 million, we take it up to 47 million because if it's unspent, or, I guess what I'm trying to say is you put it in there, we make a general fund budget of 45 million, right? And then any grant or subsidy that's already paid for in 2010, if we're talking about 2010 to 2011, that 2 million is extra money that's not spent, no matter what. It's just put in there because it was already spent in 2010.
Mayor Hanks.
Actually, let me see if I can try this.
Okay.
In 2010, the original budget was 45 million dollars.
Right.
The final budget, as far as what we had actually appropriated, in other words, that's the original, plus basically the supplemental appropriations took it to 47 million dollars. And that's what Pauline was talking about. That can be anything from grants. It can also be carryforward as far as contracts that have not been completed, so we actually have to roll that into the next year. Typically, we do not do supplemental appropriations unless there's a project. We don't do that. And so, the money, the roughly 2 million, and if you actually look at the spreadsheet, every year it's anywhere from, anywhere from 2 to almost 4 million dollars is what we do in supplemental appropriations every single year. I mean, it just, we do it every single year. But what those supplemental appropriations are project-specific. In other words, we're appropriating that money to be spent on a specific project, and a lot of those are actually what I would consider roll-forwards. In other words, we had a, say that we had a $2 million public works project, we're going to lay some pipe, and it was scheduled for fiscal year 2009. Well, we appropriated it in 2009, but it didn't get completed. So, what we do is we do a supplemental appropriation into the next year, so it just adds to it. It doesn't put new money, available money. What we're saying is, is we need to re-appropriate it in the appropriate year.
So, what you did is just, instead of calling it, let's see, unencumbered cash, you're calling it supplemental appropriation from the year before?
What we do is, we actually roll it forward, yeah. And we do that every single year. What will happen is, is Pauline, towards the end of the fiscal year, she will actually talk to each one of the department heads, saying, okay, what projects are going to be completed? Because they have to be accounted for, and we actually literally have to roll those into the next year.
But weren't they paid for? For example, weren't they paid for already in 2010, and the money was appropriated for it, but why are, so we're also appropriating 2010 onto our budget that we already paid for before?
Yeah, and Deb, you're exactly right. Give you an example. Say that same water pipe project that was supposed to go in 2009, but it didn't, it actually is going to go in 2010. Both the expense and the money both get rolled forward into the next year. The funding, both the funding source and the money, so the expense and the money basically rolls forward to the next year.
So, you're saying the 2 million would have been spent already on supplement and grants? We just included in on it for the bottom line? And I thought it was, we already included in on the 2010 and didn't put it in the 2011? Because I think we, if I'm correct, Mr. Wyffenbach, we were told the opposite. And I don't mean that in a bad way. I meant we are learning the process, and they were trying to teach us and maybe misunderstood. So, it's not a bad thing what's going on. I just wanted to have a full understanding.
Right. Mr. Chairman, if I can.
Mayor.
Just for a little bit of clarification, there's a difference between a supplemental appropriation and unencumbered cash. Unencumbered cash is money that is not spent at the end of the fiscal year, that is not going to be designated for any specific project in the following year. In other words, if the total budget, I'm going to use 45 million, and we're only going to spend 43 million, 2 million of that is actually unencumbered cash. Okay? Now, if we have a project that was appropriated in 2009, we didn't complete it, but we're going to complete it in 2010, we roll both the expense and the actual revenue, or basically the cash, forward to the next year. So, it's two different things there.
I guess I'm getting, I'm getting confused on the unencumbered, because what I'm seeing is unencumbered is like you don't, you didn't use the money in 2010, but you're bringing it forward to 2011. But then you have the supplemental and the grant, which is also included in on that, so you're calling one encumbered and one supplemental.
The difference is, the unencumbered cash, when you roll it forward, there's no project to go along with it. If you do a supplemental appropriation, if you move a project from fiscal year 2009 to 2010, you bring both the project and the money forward. The unencumbered cash does not have a project identified for it. That's why it's considered unencumbered. At the end of the year, yeah, at the end of the year, we actually have encumbered projects that we have to move forward to the next year. So, we're moving both the project and the money into the next year. The unencumbered cash is money that we just, we didn't spend, it was appropriated, but we did not spend it, and we're saying that there's no project identified in the next fiscal year four.
So, the 4.5 was unencumbered cash that we had extra? Or was it supplemental and grants, or both?
Actually, what it is, and actually, we don't have the final number, but it's right around 4 million is what revision was back, and that would be, that would actually be unencumbered cash.
Unspent.
Unspent, but authority.
So, it has, that 4 million has no money that was spent for the 4 million? There's no projects that we, it's just extra cash that, and it's not on supplements or grants?
Yes.
400,000 is rolled forward.
Right.
Except for 400,000.
Now, the other thing to keep in mind, and we're going to really confuse you now, and that is the fact that every year, it is anticipated a specific dollar amount of unencumbered cash coming back for the next fiscal year. At one point, it was in the millions of dollars. Now, in fiscal year 2011, it was 427,000?
Yes.
So, we are actually reducing the amount that we're depending upon rolling forward from the previous year. My goal is to get us to zero, so we're never dependent on any money coming back. That's the most fiscally conservative position you can be in, is not anticipating any additional money being able to be rolled forward from the previous year.
But if you do a savings, wouldn't you want to have money coming back?
Well, sure.
If you could do savings.
What I'm saying, Deb, is the money will come, the revision will be there. What I'm saying is, I'm not balancing the budget based upon a projected turnback at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. I guess my whole point here was not the encumbered, and I understood that. I guess I need to look at that again, because it's all good. But it was on contingencies, why I brought this forward, is on contingencies and how much money there was in contingencies. Does each department have a contingency as well? Pauline? These are the only contingencies we have in the city? Is the 1,258,790?
That's correct, but the enterprise funds, if they have money in their fund that's unbudgeted for, they basically have the reserves there, whether it's designated, it's reserves or not, they do have money available. If you recall, I think it was in 2010, that we did it supplement to the budget for the ambulance, because they had money in their undesignated cash, and they were going to buy another ambulance, and that was taken straight from undesignated cash. So, they do have some monies available for them.
But I wouldn't call subsidies a contingency myself, because it's spent money in a sense, and I wouldn't call a grant a contingency. I would call the mayor and council and the CIP a contingency, but...
And that's correct.
You know what I'm saying? So, some of these aren't contingencies, they're grants and subsidies, and I guess I didn't put those in the classification of contingencies, and I guess my argument was also, why don't we have maybe a contingency? Or if you're calling contingencies, or maybe reserves for Civic Center and different areas, if that's what we have to call it in order to do a savings, what is the legal amount for the Civic Center or any of the different entities that we would want to save money? What would be the legal amount that we would require for them to keep for whatever you call a contingency or reserve for any items that were have-tos?
Pauline.
Thank you, Mr. Kroger. As far as those being classified as contingency, the reason why I put them on the spreadsheet is that is how they were budgeted for 2011. That's the only reason why they're on the spreadsheet. I agree that they truly aren't contingencies, because they are already spoken for. As far as what is legally we can hold back in enterprise funds, that's on the first page of that packet, under the enterprise fund. So, you gave the example of the Civic Center. The most that they can keep in a depreciation reserve fund is about 20 and a half million.
Well, so, do we have to be by ordinance, or by what in order to get people to start doing reserves for, and then not be able to dip into them, like keep a 15% reserve on each area that would need, that are huge issues for Rapid City? Civic Center was one of them this year. I don't know if we need to put more in water, but we've done some huge things in water, but we also have some old pipes and different stuff that need to come forward. I mean, based on priority, bottom line is, I guess where I'm going, council, is this is a good way to start putting things and taking care of the have-tos of Rapid City, is doing some reserves and make sure those reserves aren't taken for anything but have-tos, necessities of that department, which we already know what are necessities, things of importance for Rapid City or infrastructure or different things. So, I guess the process in which we do that, again, is it set forth by state law, or... Mayor, did you want to answer to that?
Mayor.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Deb, you're exactly right, as far as the dollar amount that we can actually have by state statute, actually enterprise reserves. This council, ever since I've been around for 14 years, has always been very conservative as far as raising any rates, whether it's water, whether it's sewer, whether it's the Civic Center rental rates. And the problem we run into is the fact that the council in the past has never wanted to accumulate any money. They've always tried to keep rates absolutely as low as possible. The only way that you're going to accumulate any large amounts of money for any of these, whether it's water, sewer, airport, golf, the ambulance, the Civic Center, is to raise rates. Now, if you want to do that, we can start accumulating it, but if you think that you can actually take additional cuts and start accumulating the money, I'm going to tell you... I'm going to tell you, keep in mind how conservative we have been for the last three or four years. You know, if you look at the, you know, if you look at the general fund budget, you know, going back to, you know, 2007, and I'll just give you an example, in 2007, or in 2008, we're at $45 million, and in 2010, we're at $45 million. So in order to accumulate additional revenue or reserves, you can certainly do that. But realistically, about the only way that you're going to get there is to raise rates. And that would be a philosophical shift in the way the council's always thought. I know since I've been on the council, it's always, what is the least amount of increase can we get by with? And that's how we got ourselves, quite honestly, in a little bit of trouble with our water enterprise fund.
Well, I guess that's not where I'm going, is that I'm, it's not about raising rates. It's about looking at what our cash flow is. And then on our cash flow, we put some of that cash flow that we're getting already in reserve. You don't have to, in any business, you do not have to take and raise my rates for my haircuts in order to get more money and put it in reserve. I put stuff in reserve because I know next month I need a water heater, or I need my parking lot in the summer done every month for $1,000 or $10,000. I put that in reserve. I think that's pretty easy for, if we make it a priority, it doesn't, it can be based on what their total amount is, Mr. Hanks, and then take that by a percentage of what they're already making and put that in reserve. So I don't mean to say that you could raise rates and you can have a huge amount in there. What we want is something, so if something happens for a have-to. So the bottom line is, I think we can do better on how we do our reserves and how we accumulate money for these have-tos in Rapid City. Thank you, sir.
Jordan, hold on. Pauline wants to respond, and then it's your turn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out that part of the attachments, there's a copy of SDCL 92112 and 13. They apply specifically to a depreciation reserve within the proprietary fund, what the mechanics are to establish one, and also what they can be used for. And then 92114.1 is on the government funds, where it's maxed at $4 per thousand of assessed valuation. It talks about the process of that. So does 92114.2. And then the time constraints on that. And then 92131 talks about the mechanics of establishing a capital replacement reserve fund and what the limitations are on that as well. And those are all part of the packet you have.
Jordan?
Thank you. Just to clarify and just to make sure, but we still are on setting up the ongoing fund for the upgrade and maintenance of all city facilities. That's the item that we're currently on, just to check.
Correct.
Okay. With that, one of the things that I guess, you know, myself and Alderman Wall have discussed on this item is that, I guess I respectfully disagree with the mayor that this, the only way, or the only option is to raise rates. We discussed this last meeting when we discussed this. I think that's kind of a false dichotomy. And one of the things that we've specifically mentioned is actually, for example, the landfill. There is no missing the point, that at some point, we will be faced with reality. We will have to get a new location. And I guess one of the things that I, I'm happy to see us discussing this, and I understand that previous councils may have not wanted to do this. And that's understandable, given that our city was not the size nor growing at the rates that it is today. And that's very understandable. But the zeitgeist today is, is that we are growing. We do have major issues to look forward to in the next 10 to 20 years. And I think as a council, we should be discussing things not tomorrow or a week from now, but let's discuss the long-term stability and maintenance of this city. I'm really happy to see some of these options as well with, and I appreciate that assumption with the different ways to get a, these different reserve funds to do this. But the reality is, and I guess I just want to emphasize the point, that, you know, I guess I, again, to emphasize the point, I disagree that the only option is to raise rates. As discussed, and please feel free to look at the meeting minutes during the last budget hearing on this, as we discussed how we could approach this, specifically with Jason Green, that I do believe that we need to start looking at, for example, the landfill. We also currently have the other water treatment plant that will be coming up. And the other thing with, actually, and that reminds me of something. I thought it was interesting that in the discussion of unencumbered and appropriations being set aside and then moved over to the next fiscal year, in discussing actually the water, the, not the Jackson Springs Water Treatment Plant, but our current one, we've talked about this previously, that it was $80 million. But what has occurred to me, and I guess I would like to also point this out, is that that rate study was done before the Great Recession took effect. The inflation rates for the US currency have definitely changed. I think that's a fair statement. I would be interested to see where we're actually at now. That was a plan that, just like appropriations, and what was kind of alluded to, that, you know, while we may have set it aside in 2010, in 2011, there's an inflation rate of, you know, a hike of 5%, that amount changes. And I guess my point is, is that there are other issues like that that maybe we should start looking at. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for your information, on the future land use committee, that we have had discussions about the landfill and going out, that, the process to even get that started is decades, decades. And the first place you got to have is find, buy the land, find a suitable place. But as we have grown and started surrounding that, those discussions have taken place. It's not a pretty picture either.
Pauline?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Jordan, Mr. Mason, too. I failed to mention, we do have a separate fund set up for solid waste perpetual maintenance. We are required by state statute to have that fund set up for our estimated closure costs. That's where the post-closure liability comes into play that I was talking about earlier. And there is currently $2.6 million set aside for that, and that continues to grow as the years go on. So I apologize for not including that previously.
Mayor Hanks?
The other thing, there again, let me just clarify something. What I'm stating is, is the fact that this council has held the line on everyone's budgets for three years in a row. Matter of fact, we cut 5%. Now, if indeed, it's a desire of the council to start building reserves, you can certainly do that, and you can direct them. But keep in mind, if you want to say that you want to put 5% a year, what you've done is you've just reduced their operating budget by 5%. So that's what I'm saying, is we've squeezed all these department heads, all these departments, very, very hard the last three or four years. And what I'm saying is, if you, if you start requiring them to start putting aside an additional, say, 5% out of their operating budget, you will start seeing cuts in services. Now, the other thing I want to be very specific about is the fact that even though there isn't specific reserves, and I don't, is Robert here? I don't see Robert else. Water enterprise funds, sewer enterprise funds, all those try to keep a minimum of, I believe, well over $1 million at any given time. Robert? Can you talk just a little bit about the enterprise funds and what kind of a minimum balance do we try to keep in each one of those enterprise funds, whether it's water, sewer, landfill, and so forth?
Well, the goal is, and this was all determined when we did the water and sewer utility rate study back in 2008. And the goal was, make sure you can fund, adequately fund, your five-year capital improvement program. But also, on the operating side, try to reserve about three months' worth of operating funds, just in case you had an emergency. We felt three months was a good goal. I'd like to see that someday elevated to six months, but right now, three months is our goal. Well, it depends. I would say for water, that would be about $1.2 million. For water wreck, you're probably $1.5 million. Solid waste might be closer to $2.5 million.
Robert, you said that was a goal. Are we at that goal?
I would say we are. The one that I get a little bit concerned about would be the water enterprise fund with the Jackson Springs. It can fluctuate with a large project like that. So I kind of need to wait and see what happens with the bid opening. But I think we're pretty close. I feel fairly comfortable with that one. The other ones I feel very comfortable with.
Mr. Weifenbach, did you have questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. You asked the one question I was going to ask to see where we were at on the goal. But I just wanted to say that there is, you know, there, this is a good discussion, because if we don't have that discussion, we're going to be having the same discussion that we had when we had to talk about raising the water rates. I mean, we can do business as usual, if that's what everybody's comfortable with. I don't think this council is comfortable with that. I've been here four years, just long enough to see a metamorphosis of a thought process that says responsibility takes precedent. And responsibility also comes in hand of looking at, down the road, some of these improvements that are going to be needing to be done, whether it's squeezing the budget, whether it's raising rates, whether it's re-appropriating the budget, however it takes. If we stymie this conversation, then it's simple. We go nowhere. And then we come back and we have these huge rate increases 10 years from now, because that council 10 years ago was unwilling to make those decisions. I'm willing to make those decisions, and I think that most of these people up here are so. I know the Civic Center is an area that's going to be facing some major renovations and overhauls down there that we need to look at. Obviously, the landfill, they're talking about buying land. So to buy land, that's going to cost money. So these are, these are good conversations that we need to have. And I don't want to limit anybody's thought process into thinking that automatically we're going to have to strip a rate increase across the board. I mean, there's opportunities, there's efficiencies, there's opportunities to synergize. I think everything should be left on the table, and no one should be frightened to say what's on their mind about when it comes to this process. So I just appreciate having the conversation. So, thank you.
Mr. Mason?
I just have a quick question, actually. And I've been just curious about this, and I guess I'd just like to ask at this point. I keep hearing that we've held the line and we've cut 5%. And from the numbers I get every time, and I just would like some clarification on this, from the budget, the general fund only makes up 28% of our total budget. We went from $148 million to $163 million. And according to the budget, the total fiscal year budget, that's where I find the 5% cut, is out of the small portion of the 28% out of the general fund that was decreased. I don't understand how we held the line, actually.
Mayor Hanks?
It's very simple. City of Rapid City has always used as a benchmark our general fund budget. We've done that for about 30 or 40 years. That's what we always use as the benchmark. That's because that is the tax-supported budget. The remainder of the budget, which is the enterprise funds, are revenue generators. In other words, they pave their own way. So when we talk about holding the line on the budget, we're always talking about tax-supported budgets or what the taxpayers actually pay, not in fees, but in taxes themselves, whether it's sales tax, property taxes, and others. So that's the distinction. That has been a benchmark that we have used at least for 30 or 40 years. And that is historically the benchmark that every municipality, I believe, in the state uses.
Jordan?
Well, just to clarify that, then, I, if that is the benchmark, and we're using that to compare that to the total budget, given that we went from $148 million, give or take, to about $163 million, I guess I'm just not, I'm not understanding why we would use that as a benchmark when...
Mr. President? The reason we use general fund budgets is because of the fact that that's tax-supported. If you want to look at the total budget, we certainly can, but it will fluctuate greatly depending on what, whether or not we invest in infrastructure. The reason we're at $163 million this year, as far as our total budget, is because we had a $40 million water treatment plant, and we had $20 million worth of airport improvements. If you back out those two infrastructure improvements, instead of being at $163, Mr. Jordan, you'd be at $103. You know, what it comes down to is whether or not we're willing to invest in infrastructure. Some years, we're going to have a lot of big projects. This is a good example. With just those two projects, that was $60 million between the two. Those will show up. If you go into fiscal year 2012, I'll guarantee you, our total budget's going to drop dramatically because of the fact that these two, these two large infrastructure projects were slated for 2011.
Jordan?
Thank you. I appreciate that. I guess I'm also just trying to get a better grasp of this, because it's just slightly unclear to me. The other thing that I, I guess I'm hearing is that, so the enterprise funds pay their own way? And I guess that, that is, so they receive absolutely no tax dollars whatsoever?
Mr. Chairman, almost without exception. There are a couple of exceptions, and I'll give you an example. The Civic Center is probably the best example. Although they typically never receive general fund money, they do get 3/4 of a percent, 75% of the triple B tax. That, that does supplement theirs. Water enterprise funds, sewer enterprise funds, airport and so forth, those typically are 100% revenue-supported. In other words, they, they support, they generate enough revenue to pay themselves. Up until recently, we did have to use some general fund money to help support the golf courses. In the last couple of years, they've been basically on a positive cash flow, so we've worked that out. So really, with the exception of, I would say, probably the Civic Center, and Pauline, that's really... Civic Center is the only one, and there again, they're not using sales tax. What they're using is the triple B tax. They get 75% of the triple B. The other 25% goes to the convention and visitor bureau. And that, there again, is pretty much standard for just about every event center in the country. They typically have to have some kind of a supplemental revenue source, because what ends up happening is, is as an event center, you want to try and keep the rates absolutely as low as possible, so everybody can use it. But in order to cash flow it, there's, there's no way that the rents that are collected can actually pay all the bills. So there's usually a supplemental revenue source. And in our case, it's a triple B, and that's pretty much standard. I'll look to, I know that Alderman, you know, Davis and Brown have both served on the Civic Center Board, and I know that they're, oh, yeah, Bill. They've all served on there, and they all understand that, I don't think there's, I don't think there's, I'm not calling it an event center, a civic center an event center. There's not a single one out there that actually cash flows without a supplemental revenue source.
Anything else, Jordan?
No, thank you.
Debbie Edgar?
Thank you. I don't know if people are misunderstanding this, but I'm not saying we did anything bad in the past. That, that's not what I'm saying. I'm looking what we can do better for the future, or what we can look at maybe to plan ahead. So when you're talking about it, I'm talking about priority and what could be based for the future. So if you're told ahead of time on your budget, instead of cutting services, and you're told ahead of time, again, on your budget, that we would be looking at for priority, some type of reserve, let's say the fire department, and we would need a reserve this year in yours, just because there might be a have-to that comes up, because we have nothing else to basically help you fund your have-tos. I think as a department head or a person in there, if you're told ahead of time, "We make a resolution," because it says, "Authorized depreciation reserve without property fund 9-12-21-12. The governing body or municipality may, by resolution, create a depreciation reserve within each proprietary fund and necessary not to exceed the accumulated depreciation of fixed assets for the respective fund," whether it be this one or fire department, if you're told ahead of time, based on priority, so you wouldn't have to do cuts in services, that we needed some type of reserve just in case, just like any other business, just in case, as you see some of them have them, I don't think they'd have to cut services. And I'll keep saying this, I don't think it's bad what we're doing. I just think there could be added to it. So I hope people aren't taking that wrong. You just know, when you do a budget, sometimes you can change things to make it better every year. We do it in every business. And that's why council members are bringing these things up. They're looking at the 30, 40-year benchmarks that we've done, and how we could change them to better put that revenue that is generated in the budget, because it's told ahead of time, because you usually have an average. Most people have an average in their budget, right? So if you knew you had that average budget, and you could cut it, if Mayor says, "Cut it by 5%." But then we start saying, "We want some type of reserve in your budget," is that a problem with each department or each area that we're talking about? I think some do it, like I said, and some don't. And we can do better. And I think if that, if the council sees that, that there is a, like Civic Center, for example, there was a little bit of an effort to put some money away, because we knew that was going to happen, with the, the, what's it called?
Energy plant.
Energy plant. And it make a difference. It's like that in every business. I mean, we can't always run everything like that. We have to do by process and procedure. But why can't we change some of that process and procedure to make it better for the future? Again, Mayor, nothing to do with your administration or how you're running things. I think you've done well. I think the council has done well. But anything we can look at for future plans to make it better is good.
Mayor Hanks?
Thank you. Deb, just to follow up, and... Thank you. Deb, just to follow up, and there again, as far as the enterprise funds, you know, we do try and keep, always have reserves there because, there again, keep in mind, under state statute, the enterprise funds are to remain with that enterprise. In other words, you're not supposed to transfer money, and I'll give you an example. You're not supposed to take money from the Water Enterprise Fund to go out and buy new police cars. You're not supposed to do that. So in the enterprise funds, absolutely, does it make sense to have a reserve? The answer is yes. On the general fund side, if you try to build in reserves into, say, the police department or the fire department, you can certainly do that. It's a change of philosophy, but basically what you'd end up doing is, instead of having unencumbered cash come back, what you'd be doing is basically setting up a reserve. And my only concern there is the fact that if that happens, what'll end up happening is, think of it this way, you may lose some of your control over your budgetary considerations every year if you're building these reserves into the general fund departments. So, nothing wrong with that, just a shift in philosophy. There again, what we do when it comes to general fund, when we have unencumbered cash or the money that's unspent, we pool it back in, and then the council has the discretion to spend it within any of the departments. If you create, say, a 5% reserve for each one of the general fund budgets, what you're going to be doing is somewhat limiting the discretion that the council may have. So, like I say, it's a philosophical question. Nothing wrong with the discussion.
Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just keep using the Civic Center, for example, on these things. When I was on the Civic Center Board, and Dave might have some more, he's on there after I did, every time we tried to save up money and put it in a fund, and the public heard anything about that, we caught wholly raft.
Your rates were too high.
Yep. Your rates are too high. What are you doing? Hoarding money, be it for whatever. Get your rates down. Take that money and put it out and get your rates down. So, that idea had been brought up, the Civic Center. We talked about it, but it's a no-win on that issue. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Debbie Hadcock.
I also was on the board for the Civic Center, and the bottom line there is, if you put in a have-to fund, and it's only used for capital improvements, it's a little bit different than just having funds out there and not showing people it's for the have-to capital improvement, instead of something that we can just do a want on. And that makes a big difference when you do it by resolution and put it forth in any committee or board in a resolution that's just for those type of have-to projects. So I think it's how you do the process and procedure in which you set up those, because, again, I was on the Civic Center Board, and it seemed like something that is possible. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Brown. That's a really good point. Actually, great analogy to that is, of course, our social security lockbox system from the federal government, which isn't, obviously, have that good of a lock on it, now does it? You know, unfortunately, my generation probably won't get anything in that box, but, yeah, I'll keep working. I can work hard and fill that thing back up. Actually, according to the previous discussion, and I appreciate Alderman Hadcock's discussion on this, unlike a lockbox system where we're actually just building up funds, one of the things that I guess was discussed is actually looking at getting to specific projects, bonding those early on, and then starting to accumulate the fund to pay off the bond right away, instead of, you know, bonding, setting that up, getting the project started, but starting at, you know, two weeks before the project actually starts. You know, two months, whatever, short timeframe. And I guess I see that as an option. Of course, there are pros and cons to every way of doing things. The other thing that I also wanted to just comment on is Mayor Allen Hanks made a very good point, but I guess I would clarify that that's a, that may happen. There's no surety. And this really does come down to a discussion of philosophical way of governance. I mean, that's really what we're talking about here, is do we look at the short-term endeavor and try and plan for short-term activities and plans for the city, or do we want to start branching out to long-term planning, and how do we go about that? And of course, there's always going to be disagreement about how we go about that, but I think it's important that we still talk about doing it at some point. So I just wanted to emphasize those points, and again, thank you for the comments.
Further discussion, Bonnie Peters.
Thank you. I definitely am concerned that there is no money being kind of set aside, per se, for these big have-tos, like the Civic Center. I don't know what the best solution is for that, but I can envision that the economy, you know, would tank, and you end up having to have some have-tos break or whatever, that there's just no money set aside, and then we're sure would have to probably dramatically cut services. And it just seems, well, just seems like with an individual should be planning for retirement, the city should be planning for retirement, you know, for all of the buildings, all of, you know, infrastructure, and setting aside money to pay for those. But again, I'm just expressing there is a concern that I have for that, and maybe I'm just being naive because apparently our forefathers thought that we'd just pay for it when we needed it in the future. So, but I appreciate the conversation, and I don't know if we're getting anywhere with it, but thanks.
Further discussion on this item? Any other discussion on this item? Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have to comment, there's been a lot of discussion tonight on this item as far as setting aside reserves. And I'm certainly in favor of having money set aside for ongoing projects. That's, I'm going to say that again, I am certainly in favor of having money set aside for ongoing projects. But as I listen to this conversation go round and round in circles, I want to make sure that we don't mislead our department heads or the city employees that may be listening to this into believing what I was hearing. And I was hearing a discussion that was talking about setting aside a certain amount of money without any additional income or any cuts in services. That does not make sense. Can't do both. I'm sorry. It just does not make sense to me. If we're going to set money aside, we either have to increase revenue, or we have to cut something to carve that money aside. We have to decide what pain we want to feel. There are three pieces of that equation. We either have to raise the income, we have to cut services, or we don't set aside the reserves, one of the three. But you can't, we're simply lying to ourselves if we want to blow that blue smoke up our own tailpipe. And I refuse to do that, and more so, I refuse to do it to our city employees and send them out thinking that they're going to discuss this tomorrow, thinking that we're going to be cutting because they're going to read through what was said. I don't think that we've answered the hard question tonight. I think this question, as far as reserve, is one that needs to be discussed in more detail, because the reserves are necessary, but this discussion didn't get us there. Thank you.
Further comments? Deb Hadcock.
Couple of things on that. Bottom line is, discussion is about long-range planning. That's the bottom line. What we can do as a council to do that, to sit there and say, well, we can't do that, and that's been done before, and this is not going to work, and that, we're not saying what we're specifically saying is right. We're saying bring forth some suggestions for the have-tos or the necessities for Rapid City, for long-range planning. We might not know that. You might have better philosophies than us. We're asking tonight, I don't think we're lying to ourselves. What we're doing is sitting here, trying to get some discussion, some of us, about what we can do for that long-range planning. Round and round in circles is not giving suggestions, but coming in and saying, that's not going to work. That's not going to work. Additional cuts, cuts in services. I don't cut any services in my business when I have to do something. I don't. I don't give you less than when I have to budget. I never have. Why should this be any different? Why are you telling me it's any different? Can you tell me it's any different? Because we have a set amount of money, and that's what we use it for, and that's all the money we can use it for. Is that what we're saying? Because if you do that in your business, wow. That's a hardcore business, setting forth the same thing and the same process every year and not changing anything in order to make it when recession or depression or anything else comes a forth, because I'm telling you, why don't you ask the people right now that are doing long-range planning right now, because the last two or three years, they've had issues. Why shouldn't we be any different? Why should that long-range planning not come forth now? We're talking about budget. We're talking about bring your philosophies and your issues to help us, instead of saying, basically, you're saying what we're saying is a joke, that we can't do it. We can. I believe we can. I've been in here four or five years. Kroger's been in here a long time. A lot of us been in here for a while. We should know how to change some of this. And the new ones, we are asking for suggestions, because you, some of you do run businesses. There's a good way to do it. We had some performance-based budgeting. We had some other suggestions. I'll keep saying it. We're not doing a bad job, Mr. Hanks, but you know what? If we can do something better today for long-range planning for Rapid City, aren't we all into that? And don't we want us to do some just suggestions, because isn't this why we're here at this table? I don't want to play politics. What I want to do is look out for the citizens of Rapid City and what's next. So please bring forward your suggestions.
Further comments, Jordan Mason.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I just wanted to make a quick comment, and just to clarify. We are still talking about establishing an ongoing fund for the upgrade and maintenance of all city facilities. Just to succinctly point this out, we're having a discussion about management and really philosophical principles on ideas of governance is really what it boils down to, just reiterate my point here. I don't really buy the kind of red herring diversion tactic that we're talking about employees or anything of the like. I think that's kind of an unscrupulous diversion tactic to even take in this discussion. And I just wanted to point it out. It's a logical fallacy. Find it uncalled for. Thank you.
Any other discussion on this item? If not, we'll move on to the next one, which is City Attorney's Office, which was to be an update on resource or consultant firms to conduct Leahy-type report on the City Attorney's Office and Public Works Department. And I believe, actually, Mr. Davis pointed this out, I think our motion was that our last budget hearing, it was all departments, not just the two that were listed on here. So, do we have an update this evening on that?
We've been, we've actually been focusing on the City Attorney's Office over the last three or four weeks. I will tell you, we've talked to, where's Wade, at least two or three different, two or three different folks. We thought we actually had someone we could recommend. They backed out, so we'll continue to look. And, Deb, so Wade, did you have a report other than that?
No, just that, I know Jason had talked to a judge here in the Seventh Circuit about it.
An old judge out of Sioux Falls. He turned us down.
Yeah, some suggestions. Retired circuit judge out of Sioux Falls, another attorney that's...
So right now, we're just going to focus on City Attorney's Office, and then take the next one, and the next one, and the next one.
The next step will be, next up will be Public Works, next step after that. And there again, we'll do a systematic, I would suggest about every six months, we actually go in and take a look at one of these. So, we are moving in that direction.
Any other comments on this item? If not, next one was a mitorium on filling vacancies, to provide a current report of vacancies, including length. Which position has been vacant. We basically went through that at the start of the meeting. Any other discussion on this item this evening? If not, next item is the Enterprise Fund Income Statements, Updated on Project Progress, Anticipated Presentation Within 30 Days.
Take the governor.
They're on the way. Pauline, is that correct?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. January and February are on the website. You should have received emails to that effect, and I hope to have the March ones out yet this week.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Jordan?
I just wanted to thank Ms. Sumption and the finance staff for doing that. That is, again, me beating a dead horse, but that has been extremely helpful for me to kind of track some of those items, and been extremely helpful. Thank you, Jason.
Any other discussion on this item? If not, that takes us to the end of tonight's agenda. We do, looks like we do have a meeting scheduled for May 23. Just for clarification, what items do we have left? Or we just put one on the agenda for this evening, and then was there anything else that we carried on?
Sales tax.
Sales tax update. Could we have one of those, Mayor, on that date?
I think we have a mid-month report. We're actually up, I should note off the top of my head, Pauline, we're up for, what are we up as far as sales tax? Mr. Chairman, is, just out of curiosity, is there anything specific as far as next meeting, or can we actually get the questions and forward those responses to you?
Well, that's what I was just kind of...
I just hate to have another meeting if what you're looking for is answers, and we can actually respond and get those to everyone.
Charlene, have you, you know what we have?
Okay, there you go. Mr. Chairman?
Just the motion that we move forward this evening?
Sales tax, there again. We have through February, so it's only for the first two months out of the year, we're up 4.72%, so just shy of 4 and 3/4%.
Through February?
Through February. We do not have any checks in for March yet. So, there again, looking better isn't great, considering that our average increase in our sales tax, if you go back to 1972, when we started collecting sales tax, the average increase annually is about 6% to 7%. So we're still down a little bit, but I'm going to tell you what, it sure beats where we were. You know, we were up 3.55% in 2010 versus down 3 and 1/4% in 2009, and so far this year, we're up about 4 and 3/4%. So, it is certainly trending the right direction.
Okay, what is the wish of the committee? Do they want to have, stay scheduled for a May 23 budget meeting to discuss the one item on the agenda? Just want that information by email? Department heads would like to be here in person for that meeting? Send the report?
Yeah, we can do that.
Give the update to legal and finance, and then...
The suggestion is to send it out, but then actually give a report at legal and finance.
Then it'll go out to the full council.
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion to second adjourn. All favor say aye. As opposed, we adjourn.